We'll start today's meeting with the pulle being offered by Commissioner Walter Kaniakua.
Hey, Pulu Kaku. Our dear Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the day that you set before us. Let us be glad and rejoice in it. Please bless our proceedings. We thank you for the celebrations that we've participated in with the Helm family, the Helm Ohana. We thank you for his work and for the support of his family during these many years that we've been productive as a commission. Bless the day before us, the people who come, whether in person or virtually. We ask that you'd be with our families and the generations that follow. We thank you for the generations that precede us and their vision and their hopes for better lives for our communities. These things we ask in your name and give you thanks. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Walter. Call to order. The meeting of the Hawaiians Commission is called to order. The meeting is being held live and in person at Halepono'i, DHHL Couple A Office, located 91-5420, Couple A Parkway, Oahu, and virtually via Zoom. I'm Kali Watson, Chairman of the Hawaiians Commission. Today's date is Tuesday, June 18, 2024, and the time is 9:38. Okay, Leo, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Freitas is excused. Commissioner Helm.
Here.
Commissioner Kolekini.
Aye.
Commissioner Kalapa is excused. Commissioner Kaniakua.
Aye.
Commissioner Marfil.
Aye.
Commissioner Namuol is, um, will join us later. Commissioner Nevis.
Aye.
Chair Watson.
Here.
Six members present. We have a quorum.
Okay, we'll start the public testimony on agenda items. And if you can limit your testimony to three minutes, be appreciated. Then we also carry over item H2, then move to the agenda. The commission will recess at noon for lunch. And at 1:30 PM, the commission will recess to conduct a contested case hearing. Following the hearing, we will address any remaining J items. And the next commission meeting is scheduled for Monday and Tuesday, July 15th and 16th of this year at Halepono'i. So let's start with the public testimony on agenda items. And we'll start with Jojo Tanimoro. Okay, why don't we get started then?
Item H1, okay. Item H1.
Okay, item H1, whatever that is.
Transfer?
Transfer.
I mean, H2, H2, sorry.
H1? It's two. Oh, okay, transfer the.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Sharon Mendoza, Program Budget Analyst, and I am presenting an amendment to item H2 and requesting the commission's approval to transfer the balance in the Hawaiian Home Receipts Fund as of June 30, 2024, to the Hawaiian Home General Loan Fund. The projected balance as of June 30, 2024 is $5 million. Are there any questions?
Sharon, I guess the, um, would be transferring it to the fund which provides loans, right?
Yes.
Is that gonna have, I mean, any adverse on the administrative services that are being paid for under this Hawaiian Homes administration account?
I don't believe so because I received the encumbrance and expenditure report as of May, and we seem to have some cushion.
Please, Chair will entertain a motion for this.
So move. Second.
Okay, any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on the J agenda.
Oh, sorry, Chair, hold on. Oh, we have a testimony for each two. Blossom?
Blossom, you're up. Blossom on H1. We've already.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mahalo for the opportunity to testify on item H2. So for those of you that haven't been around the commission for a while, uh, at one time, the department transferred all of their revenue from the loan fund to the admin account. And while I understand the need to support the administration in whatever way we can, you know, I do want to bring your attention to the fact that on Maui, uh, you know, we've got several projects coming into play. Uh, a lot of our beneficiaries have been indirectly impacted by the fire in Mahaina, and so their income is not up to par to meet the needs of the financial needs for the project that's currently in play. This fund has been deposited into the loan fund on a regular basis for the past maybe five years. And at this point, we are looking at our beneficiaries having the need to access this loan fund because they simply can't get a mortgage from conventional lenders. So while I appreciate the need for supporting our admin, particularly since you passed the two items yesterday for modernization, the system, as well as grant request, I also want you to take into consideration the need for continuing to support the loan fund for these families. Okay? Uh, mahalo for the opportunity.
Thank you, Walter. Okay, we'll start with the J agenda. And first up, Lawrence Ha'ou and Francine Palama.
Aloha, and good morning.
Morning, aloha.
Aloha, Mr. Chairman and commission members. My name is Lawrence Koholo Ha'ou. I am a Kanaka Oiwi from the bone. I am appearing before you, the commission, because I am requested that the commission expedite an assigned lease number 05666 from Ms. Francine Palama, who is also appearing here on my behalf. I'm holding in my hand from Francine who is appearing on my, or a transfer document issued, sent by the Department of Hawaiian Homeland, Hilo Brands, October 6, 2023, at 9:26 AM. I'm here before the commission because I have been waiting eight months and 12 weeks to receive the assignment of this lease. Despite the transfer document being assigned October 6, 2023, the Department of Hawaiian Homeland has not issued a lease in my home, my name. This means that Francine Palama is still official lease recognized by the Department of Hawaiian Homeland, and I am unable to live on this land as designated a beneficiary. I am 86 years old. I was born in Pa'ohau, August 24, 1937. I grew up in Minnoili and Okeno. I moved to Keokah in 1950. I attended Keokah Elementary School, the fifth and sixth grade, and what you kind committed, and graduated from Pilo High School. I received 15 streaming scholarships, and I chose to go to Indiana University. I received my bachelor's, my master's, and doctorate in health and safety. I lived in several states, taught elementary and high school in four universities, Western Illinois, the Macomil Illinois, Indiana University in Bloomington, Indiana, Columbia University in New York, and the University of Hawaii in Honolulu. In 1972, I was appointed by Governor Burns as Deputy Director, Highway Safety, Department of Transportation. I worked as a deputy director for over 30 years and then retired. It was then that I was awarded the same land from Hawaiian Homeland on July 1985, lease number 5666. This is the land that we are talking about today, located on 121 Kapili Avenue in Keokah. However, at this time in 1990, I chose to live on Oahu as I assigned the assignment and lease date October 3, 1990, assigned this land to the wonderful lady, Ms. Francine Palama. Last year, Francine contacted me. She said that her parents had enjoyed her home on this land for over 33 years, and she wanted to assign this land back to me. So that is my retirement. I would finally enjoy the land of my home in Keokah. Last year, we went to Hawaiian Home Office in Hilo twice, the last being October 6, 2023, when Francine and I signed the transfer papers. And now it's over eight months, and I'm still, am not the registered lease. I hold in my hand plans of new home on the land, but the process cannot be forward because vital element is missing. As I am not the leasee, I cannot submit my home design to the Department of Planning and Permit. I do not have the necessary documents indicated that I am the leasee of lease number 505666. So now I continue to wait. I cannot live on this land. I cannot have a home on this land for me and my family. I have contacted the Hawaiian Homeland Hilo Brands several times, but cannot do anything because it is a couple of office that has to fast us the transfer paper. Now that there is no one to call anymore, no one to help me, can you help me get my land transferred and that's right? I would like to live on this land before I am gone from this earth. I would like to name my successor. My daughter stands here with me, and she is also a Kanaka Ma'ola and has no right to this land. We are in limbo. My question is, why has this taken so long? Is this acceptable to the commission to allow the leasee to wait one month and eight month, one to two months, for over eight months, for over being given the right to live, build, enjoy this land? How long do I have to wait for Hawaiian homeland to preserve the assignment lease that was assigned and stamped? October 6, 2023, I want to go back to my home in Keokah. I hold this paper that does not give me the right to go home. Who can you help me? And I can name the leasee, all the rights and the lease of this land. Who will make the decision for now to get this done? Mr. Chairman, commission members, I ask you, can you help me expedite my request on assignment to the lease number 505666 to me? I asked the, Mr. Chairman and commission, respect the right of these things under my name, Lawrence Koholo Ha'ou. I defer the rest of my time to Ms. Mahalo, and I want to thank Ms. Nina and her staff in the Hilo office, aloha, Makoa.
Aloha, Ko, Commissioners. My name is Francine Palama. Let's see, all the property of 121 Kapili Avenue, still in limbo with Mr. Ha'ou. I shared a story as Larry did earlier. Our family was given this land, was blessed with this land. Aloha, Makana, ya'ke'ya. And then after the children grew up, the grandchildren, great grandchildren, two of my four children have received the lease from Hawaiian Homelands. The other two have their own homes. And I'm quite sure that you have a written statement by me. But after meeting with my children, we all agreed that the land should be returned to Uncle Larry. Nothing is wrong with the land, but the land served its purpose. And this was a gift of aloha from Mr. Ha'ou. And as you heard earlier, we are requesting that an expeditious process from our staff at DHM, DHHL, Okua, his request. As you heard earlier, the construction documents and all of the above, the scheduling, his new home cannot come to fruition. And we're hoping that by the end of the year, that we can bless this new home and that Larry can go back home to Keokah, you know? And he was just as much a surprise when I called him. First thing he asked me was, Francine, what's wrong with the land? I said, nothing wrong with the land, Larry. The land served its purpose, and my family and I would like to return the land back to you. So I asked this morning for all our commissioners to consider, why can we not help another Kanaka who has met the requirements? We have gone from Mr. Ha'ou to Fran Palama, or Fran Palama to Mr. Ha'ou. I don't think there's nothing in between here that hopefully our documents didn't get lost, okay, or, you know, misplaced, yeah? That a transfer could happen expeditiously, and Mr. Ha'ou can spend the rest of his time back home on his aina pulapula in Keokah. And mahalo, Commissioners, for allowing the time for both Larry and I to come forward and ask of this request. And we are very hopeful that it will move expeditiously through your vote of approval. Mahalo.
Juan Garcia, next to you. Aloha. Good morning, Chair. Members of the commission, Juan Garcia, Homestead Services Division Administrator. I would like to take this time to first apologize to Mr. Ha'ou and Auntie for the delay. However, I've spoken with staff. Again, I don't want to come up with any, give you any excuses, but we are committed to bring this transaction to you next month for approval so we can expedite the transfer of the lease to Uncle. Again, sorry.
Mr. Ha'ou, are you, have you named the successor?
Have you named the successor, Larry?
That would be my daughter, Melody, Kualani.
Oh, okay. Okay, so, okay, so you should fill out, we'll process the advance, but also, you know, name your, the daughter as a successor. That'd be very helpful.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. And thank you for coming today. Sorry for the delay. Okay, the next item on J agenda would be Jan McKeppa.
Good morning, Commissioners and Chair. Jan McKeppa, Wa'ani Valley Homestead Community Association. First and foremost, mahalo for yesterday. That was awesome. I'm still on cloud nine. Today is update for Wa'ani Valley Homestead. So we have community concerns and updates. So on this first slide that is up on the screen, for those of you that are not familiar with our homestead, it is done in two parts. The first part is our residential area on the left-hand side. And on the right-hand side is the agricultural lots that are located to the rear of our, our homestead. So, um, next slide. One of the concerns is that we've had illegal dumpings on Kolealiili'i Street, which is towards the back, um, in our agriculture zone area. So possible shared solutions, we talked about at our meetings, is maybe placing boulders on the shoulder to deter cars and trucks of pulling over to dump their rubbish there. Cameras and signage was another suggestion. There is a back road that, Wa'ani Valley Road, that connects to the backside. So another suggestion was maybe installing a gate and put a lock on it. I'm not sure what the legalities of that is. And maybe keep it, open it for emergency purposes with keys to the department, to HPD and HFD. So that's on the illegal dumping side. So next slide. The area that's shown in red is our main road coming into our homestead. So the first red dot is at the bottom of a hill. It kind of ascends into the rest of the homestead. So what I found out at one of our meetings is that maybe our roads are not yet seen on it. It might still be a part of the department, and I still need to confirm that. But if that is the case, that the department still owns our road, then maybe we can ask for traffic calming, speed bumps, and that would be in the three areas that's showing on the map with the dots, only because the first dot on the left-hand side is the hill going down and out of our homestead. So people are coming down that hill and speeding. There's no crosswalks, there's no crosswalks in our homestead, none at all. The other two dots on the top are straightaway. So of course, you know, people kind of think that's the quarter mile, and so they're racing up and down those roads. And, um, so, you know, this leads me to believe that if the department can assist or approve traffic calming bumps as part of the community concerns, then that would be, um, that would be wonderful. We also have on the, on road safety, there's again golf carts, e-bikes, motorbikes. I believe it's an island-wide problem. And I'm just venting here because I myself want a golf cart so I can go around my neighborhood and talk to my neighbors. Maybe Commissioner Helm and your golf connections can get me on, joking. But yeah, so that's the road safety, traffic calming part of it. Next slide. Okay, before I go into this, there is, um, part of the road safety is, a lot of our drain inlets in our homestead are cracked and dangerous. There are rebars that are sticking out, and they are potential hazards to our residents. Some work was completed, but it was completed right before we had a big rain. And so some of the areas where there are easements ended up washing away, and, um, you know, it needs to be redone again. And then before I go into this slide, I wanted to thank Mr. Hope for sending monthly email reminders for the enforcement unit. I appreciate it and, you know, always asking us if there are any offenses that he needs to be looking into. Our homestead is not yet engaged. Some of our residents are weary of the retaliation, but we continue to hola mu on that platform. Now, this, this slide here is of our Kalponi Neighborhood Park. And where the red line is, there is all homeless living in that area. And they have come up to our bathroom, which is circled in the pink. They've broken, um, our drinking fountain because they're filling up large containers of water to take back to them. Our kids right now are on summer break, and so they've been using the basketball courts in the evenings to play. So we're not sure how many reside there, but we can see the tops of the tents from Kaniaki Street. We've also noticed that there are mainland transplant homeless there as well, and they've been seen periodically. They attach hoses to the bathroom spigot and bathe in the bathrooms. And we're sometimes witnessing male and females in the same bathroom. And usually that is an indication of drug use. And I've never witnessed it, but that's usually a, an indication of it. So, you know, for the safety of our keke, that is our main concern, especially because it's summertime, the kids are out of school, they're in the parks. And, um, for the most part, there hasn't been any real issues with the homeless, and we try to be compassionate. I mean, I deliver food through the Luna Lilo, Meals on Wheels, and we have an uncle that's in a wheelchair that comes to the pavilion. He's one of our recipients for our meals. But, you know, it, all it takes is just one unfortunate incident. But, so we just wanted the commission to know that we do have homeless in our homestead. Next slide. So the next slide is the fire mitigation. So myself and the vice president will be attending the Fire Mitigation Symposium that is being hosted by the department in August. We look forward to learning proactive ways to mitigate the dangers of fire. Wa'ani Valley Homestead is surrounded by brush fire, um, firebrush. Fire retardant plants can be used as a buffer to alleviate constantly cutting back on any other brush that grows there. Indigenous Hawaiian plants include Ohia Lehua, Ulue Fern, Nayo, Ko'a, Mamane, and my favorite, Po Hinahina, because of its medicinal uses. But banana, crownflowers, and even alloy and succulents are also great fire-resistant plants. And although many of these plants are resistant to fires, they can still burn. But what could be helpful is that it could slow the movement of fires to help firefighters gain control. And what also makes some of these plants unique is that they can survive a fire if burned by re-sprouting at the base or the root. So the green line on the bottom is property that is owned by DLNR, Antiponi. Auntie Poni has the niece for that one. And she pretty much keeps her area good. But the red lines are all along the stream that covers that side. And when it gets dry, all of that green, sometimes when the water is not flowing, it becomes a fire issue. The red line on along the right side is, if you can see, the residential lots are all butted up against that mountain. That small little green dot, that's my house. And so I'm right along the mountain. I am in the fire zone. And then the pink line is Puu Kuwale and Puu Pahehehe, which is a mountain ridge. And those also are prone to fires. And so this is my update on the, on the fire mitigation part. Okay, next slide. Now this one here is our sewer conversion. Our homestead has been very proactive in doing this. So this is the map from you folks from the department. The lots with the dots are identified on the state side as those that need to be converted. We need to determine what kind of system they have, whether they have CESP or SEPTIC. There's some of them that did initially convert from CESP to SEPTIC, but are now being required to convert to sewer lateral connections on the roadside. So those families could qualify for a 25-year free sewer bill as an incentive to now connect to the main sewer line. The lots with the red dots, I mean, the lots without the red dots have been identified as having no sewer billing, which could mean that they have sewer lateral connection, but they just haven't connected yet. And so some of the community concerns was that, is of course, the cost to convert. On the top, you can see the two, I don't know if you can see it, but there's two yellow lines, there's two streets on the top side where the elevation descends to a lower area. So that might be hard for those families to connect. Because we all know that you cannot ascend on a sewer, everything goes downhill. So, you know, the concern is not having to pay another bill for these families, but the sewer bill usually is higher than the water bill, although both come on one bill. And then another concern is home improvements and additions that may have been, that may need to be uprooted to accommodate connection from inside the property. So what is our homestead doing about this? So our board has been proactive, again, you know, seeking help from our residents who face sewer conversions. We did hold our first meeting on May 16th at YNI Library. It was a packed room, but I feel it's only about a quarter of the residents who braved the rain to come out. This leads us to host more meetings to educate ourselves, the board, and our residents in the conversion process. The presentation itself was done by Ted Johns of Hawaii Rural Water. We did have representatives from several organizations present to answer resident questions. Nancy McPherson from the department was there. Department of Health Wastewater Branch was there. Environmental Protection Agency was there. The City and County Environmental Department was not present, but since then, they have reached out to be included in future meetings. And if you know, you know, the City and County Environmental Department does not engage. We have a hard time engaging with them. So it is a win for us. We're looking at grant options for our residents, so they are not having to take out loans. This could be through our nonprofit or individual grants that are available. Our board continues to learn more about the conversion process. What is the differences between sewer, CESP, and SEPTIC? What is an IWS or an Independent Wastewater System? Which is a fancy road for SEPTIC systems. And what options might be available? Can we use an existing CESP or SEPTIC as a lead system? So what solutions and options can be brainstormed to make the process just a little bit easier? One idea specifically with DHHL was to entertain the idea of working with one, two, maybe five engineers that will work specifically with the department and become ma'au with the way the department works. They can review SEPTIC tank systems, stamp plans for permitting, et cetera. Kalamai, I'll try to get through quickly. Another suggestion was a SEPTIC tank, if that is an only option, that several models be pre-approved by department engineers, if that is what you folks can get for us. What this does was the wastewater planning department will then look at these pre-approved models and it will alleviate reinventing the wheel with each resident's plans. And this would hopefully make the permitting process a little more seamless and easier to navigate. This could be helpful not only for my homestead, but for homesteads across the state. Especially those in rural areas not accessible by county sewer laterals. And I just wanted to make a note that we do know that the state and probably the federal is looking at main sewer connections. Because it's still in its early stages, it may not happen, or it may, where individual water systems is a backup plan until sewer infrastructures can catch up. Assuming especially in really rural areas, not just statewide, but nationwide. And so what we're doing is we're trying to change the mindset of our residents because some of them feel like we just go wait them out or... But what we're wanting to do is we want them to be ready when the state is ready. And some feel that, you know, they're going to kick the can down the road and, and just let the next generation take care of it. But we want to fix it now because we know that in the future, the cost is going to rise for our keke and our mo'o. And we're, you know, we don't just want to dump that financial kuliana on them. So we're trying to get these families to think of this conversion as an environmental platform to aloha and malama'araina. What we can do to ensure the safety of our drinking water for our mo'o and our mo'onui in the future. So this is the legacy and example that we should be setting for our keke. One last note, aside from what I've just talked about. We do have one resident that brought up the issue of having a hard time in getting her PV system approved. And she stated that her plans are being denied based on her home being on CESP. The CESP issue is absolutely nothing to do with a rooftop PV system. And she was told that Chair would be meeting with the State Wastewater Branch to get answers on May 1st. So I'm not sure what that is. I just wanted to bring that to your attention and kind of following up for, for that resident. So that's my update. Does anybody have questions or comments for me?
I guess I had a couple of comments. You know, I noted that you identified a homeless area that in Nanakuli, one of the things we're looking at is trying to address the homeless because it's pretty pervasive along the coast. Is a kauhale setup, a temporary shelter that could be immediately put up and serve as kind of a transitional housing, but there's an end date. And then more importantly, we're looking to get very, very active with the existing homesteaders and giving them an opportunity to build SDUs or ADUs, accessory dwelling units, which would serve not only as a permanent solution. Community would be interested in?
I think it might be an, an option. The only thing is that we don't have a community areas within our homestead. The only community parcel that we have is that park. So we don't have any other areas that, that project could, or a kauhale project could be placed. And as far as ADUs, I think for a lot of our residents, I don't think they'd mind it. But some of them, if they do have family that are part of the homeless in the park, it's because they are drug problems or some other problems that they cannot have near their home, in their home, around their children. So again, we don't know what the homeless population is. We don't know if there are a lot of drug issues. We don't know if there are mental problems. We haven't even touched that yet with everything else that's going on. But I just wanted to bring that, that up to the Commission.
Yeah, I think that's part of what the kauhale setup is about, is to just get them housed and then treated. And bring in the resources and service providers to kind of address a specific, whether it's a drug issue, employment issue, or just counseling. But as a first step, the more permanent, I guess, solution would be rather than a concentration of homeless together, that we empower the community to oversee. And like you said, a lot of the homeless are probably family members. But to give them the resources, the opportunity, not only to house a family member in need, but also kind of monitor the situation too. And so one of the things that we would also be doing is providing resources and access to HPD, you know, CNHA, Catholic Charries, all kind of wonderful service providers that could adjust the problem rather than just, hey, then we got homeless, we should kick them out. That doesn't really address the problem. So we are trying to reach out to the different homestead communities to see what their receptiveness is towards that approach. So I think the first one we're looking at, and it's not a done deal, but there is a homestead lot on Pua Avenue that is next to the church, Pardinas's church. And so they had reached out and are more than receptive to take the lead. We would clear off this problem, homestead, which was basically abandoned and it's a real eyesore. And we had to board it up because not only was a problem with drugs, as well as possibly to be turned into a gaming house. So we are addressing that by accessing funds to take down that, those buildings and then replace it with a temporary kauhale setup, which would then be replaced by a permanent homestead. So similarly, we might be able to identify a similar situation in YNI Valley. But we will reach out to the homestead communities to get their guidance and acceptance or rejection.
Okay. And so I will take that back to my board, but I will also say that I am, you know, being the newest pelikikena for our homestead, I've become very protective of our homestead. And so if kauhale, kauhale transitional housing is something that the department is looking at, and it is something that could be built on Hawaiian homelands, can I request that the residents that take up that place be from our homestead first? And be more Kanaka-driven so that we can help our people? Because if we're putting it on homestead, I'd rather help our people first. I know it sounds, doesn't sound pono, but...
No, that's more than appropriate. And I can understand and appreciate what you're saying.
Okay.
Any other comments?
I just have a question.
Commissioner Neves?
Yes, Jan, on this, on this sewer hookup, that's, that's not directed by the department on this sewer hookup, is it? Because I'm not aware of it if it is.
So the department right now is doing a sewer improvement. So there's two separate projects that are going on. So there's a sewer improvement, and then there's the sewer conversion. So what I found out is that with the sewer improvement, the department needs to improve the sewer laterals and manholes and whatever in our homestead. And once that is done and up to par to the city and county, then the sewer connection will then be dedicated to the city and county. Then the city and county will take up the kuliana of doing the lateral connections to each residential home that needs to be connected.
Okay, so this is separate from, from the mandate of converting?
So the, what I spoke about is the mandate to convert.
Okay, because we have a sewer system, then they have to convert?
Yes. So the, the department right now is improving the sewer system for the conversion. But they're also improving it so that they can, they can dedicate that sewer system to the city and county. Then it'll be the city and county's kuliana to install the sewer laterals so that our families can connect and comply with the state's conversion.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, it's just that I don't know if the Commission's have, we've, we've, we've talked about the conversion, then there's, there's, there's also been some, there's some question about financing, how, how we're gonna, if we're gonna assist with financing, or the state's gonna assist with financing for the residents. And I don't know if we've really got a real decision on that.
I think that's kind of where we're coming into, in taking a look at what we can do as a homestead to look for grants either through nonprofit or individual. We do know that the federal government may allocate monies to the state for this, but we also know that when these monies come in, they're just taken by all of the different organizations and the individuals are kind of left on their own. And so we've, we've talked about that as well. And so we know that all of the different agencies will be taking a chunk of that money for infrastructure. You know, to do that work. But then again, it leaves our residents with what about us? And so we as a homestead are saying, okay.
Yeah, so that's my question is, is what efforts are we doing on, on the department's side and also on the state's side to assist with this? There's kind of, I mean, you know, I give you a lot of credit for out there and doing what you can do, but there still has to be some responsibility on the state and the, the department to try to at least get funding to do that. There should be some kind of assistance, you know, for all residents, but especially for, for our beneficiaries. So maybe it's something we need to look at, Chair, down the road.
Yeah, and I appreciate the comment as well as the definite need. We are doing quite a bit of that across the state. So I think what, what I'd like to do is maybe have an update presented to the Commission relative of the different homesteads and how we're approaching it. There is a lot going on in that area as well as assessments and identifying the different areas where there needs to be a sewer conversion.
And it's part of that, part of our, our grant program. We just, that, that would be something to concentrate on, those dollars, those federal dollars.
Yeah, let, let, have staff put together a report and give you guys an update.
Good, thank you.
I think, and I just wanted to say, you know, with grants, when we look at grants, we, you know, whoever is giving out the grant, sometimes they have income, you know, requirements. And, you know, to me, I feel like they take a look at the gross income, but they don't realize this family's got mortgages, kids have tuition, the kids are in sports, you know, they've got car payments. None of that is taken into consideration when they're looking at the income. So, yeah. So we're looking at it from all different angles and trying to see how we can help our residents.
Glad to see you're, you're involved, getting the community involved, get them ready. Because it's gonna happen one way or the other.
Yes, it's gonna happen, and I want to make sure our homestead's ready for it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Just a quick mahalo so much, Ms. Makepa. We've heard you come before the Commission with lots of concerns. I love that you're being so proactive. This is probably one of the most comprehensive reports that I've seen. Short timer, but I certainly appreciate what you're doing and standing up in those leadership roles that we have to have in our association. So mahalo nui for all that work. I know it took you just a few minutes to do a report, but it took you days and hours and weeks and months to get that work done. So thank you for the summary. Mahalo nui.
Mahalo.
Thank you, Jan.
Probably years, man. Thank you, Jan. Okay, the next person up, J3 for J3, Randy Akal. Oh, deferred, okay. J4, Samaria Dao, and Edoff. Oh, deferred, okay. Which one? Okay, J6, Jermaine Myers.
Aloha, Commissioners. That's my presentation. But first I wanted to say mahalo to you, Commissioner Helm. Last night I was able to watch yesterday's video. We got ohana all over from mainland for our graduations. Your video reminded me of my upbringing and on homestead. My mom has fourteen, sixteen total in this family, siblings. And then my dad has sixteen as well. And so on homestead land in Nanakuli, your pictures reminded me of all those kinds of celebrations, et cetera. And so I want to mahalo you for all you do. I, I hope that I can come to Molokai one day and come to your house for eat. My grandma was born in Ho'olehua, Molokai. So you have, I have history there. Mahalo. Regarding my agenda, I don't want to waste anyone's time. Thank you so much for this opportunity to present to the Commission. My name is Jermaine Myers, for the record. I'm an Anakuli Hawaiian Homestead Lasi. What is really important to me is getting the message to the Commissioners, to the state of Hawaii, to all Lasi's that are current on the land and also waitlisters, is that when we all applied for Hawaiian homelands, we applied for a homestead lot. And I want to bring that home to you by my presentation. I shared with you before that on the dictionary, it says, "Homestead means the home in adjoining land." the home in adjoining land occupied by a family, an ancestral home, a tract of land acquired from US public lands, et cetera." Next slide. Oh, you got the wrong one up. Yeah, it's the one that says J agenda, the folder. Yeah. The J agenda. It was my USB. Leah has a copy as well, if you wanna, yep, J agenda. Okay. Mahalo. Mahalo. Okay, so next slide. The next slide, again, it continues to define that to the, to live frugally or self-sufficiently as on a homestead, especially by growing and preserving food. And the next slide. And finally, it says, "The home in adjoining land with all, any buildings that is occupied usually by a family as its principal residence." Next slide. You're going too fast, right there. Okay, so this is on the administrative law, ten dash one dash five, there's the definitions. I want to read for you what says for homesteader. Means that holder or successor thereto of a lease, which may be of the following classes issued under section 207 of the Act. One residential or residence lot lease, two pastoral or pastoral lot lease, and three agricultural or agricultural lot lease. I will bring up section 207 soon, but next slide. At the top of this one, it defines a lessee has the same meaning as homesteader. Native Hawaiian means any descendant of not less than, I accidentally highlighted that. But lessee refers back to a homesteader. Next slide. Trac means any tract of Hawaiian homelands leased as authorized by section 207 of the Act. Next slide. And this is what 207 says, and I mentioned it at the workshop on Thursday. Leases to Hawaiians license. A, the department is authorized to lease to native Hawaiians the right to the use and occupancy of a tract or tracts of Hawaiian homelands within the following acreage limits per each lessee. And just residential is being up for rental. I wanted to show you what we all applied for. Number three, not more than one acre of any class of land to be used as a residence lot. Next slide. I went to the department's website, and this is the page that says, "Applications and Waitlist." I highlighted applying for Hawaiian homelands, which is the next slide. On the next slide, it shows you that it's aloha to all of us. It welcomes us to the Hawaiian homelands program, and it tells us eligibility requirements to be eligible to apply for a Hawaiian homelands homestead. I highlighted in blue, homestead lease. You must meet two requirements, and we all talked about before, eighteen years or older, and you must be defined as fifty percent native Hawaiian through your genealogy. Next slide, next slide, next slide. It's going down on the same page. On the bottom there, I just went down on that same page on the website. Types of homestead leases. There are three kinds of homestead leases. Residential, agriculture, and pastoral. You may apply for one of the following. Next slide. It says, "One residential lot, one agriculture lot, one pastoral lot, one residential lot and one agriculture lot, or one residential lot and one pastoral lot." You may not apply for all three types of homestead leases, nor may you apply for both an agriculture lot and a pastoral lot. And when you, I highlighted there, homestead leases availability by island. It tells us, if you want to come on Oahu and get a pastoral, it's not available. The only way you can get a pastoral land is on Hawaii, Kauai, Maui, and Molokai. And on Lanai, only residential. Then it says, "Available residential awards." The homestead program offers a range of residential awards that include but are not limited to fully improved lots with new homes on them, fully improved vacant lots, vacant lots with minimal improvements. DHHL recognizes that beneficiaries can come from a diverse financial backgrounds. As a result, DHHL has formed cooperative partnerships with several nonprofit and government organizations to provide the beneficiaries with as many housing options as possible. For example, both self-help housing and Habitat for Humanity Homes have been constructed on Hawaiian homelands. Next play, next slide, yep, right there. Benefits of Hawaiian homelands, homestead lease. This is what it tells us on the way, on the website. Advantages of being a Hawaiian homestead lessee. Annual lease rent of a dollar per year, ninety-nine-year lease, lease term which can be extended for an additional one hundred years, allowing you to pass your homestead from generation to generation. Seven-year exemption from real property tax, complete exemption of tax on land, minimal real property tax after the first seven years, taxing of assessed value of improvements on your property, homesteaders exemption, low-interest government loans. And in yellow, I highlighted, "The ability to use the equity in your property to obtain loans." Contact DHHL for more information. And then it goes into details, applying for a homestead lease. So I cut out the rest, I deleted, so to keep only the slides applicable. Next slide. But you can go to the website, and everything you see here, you'll see there. Application waiting list. I highlighted for you, when we want to know what is the number we're on the waitlist, we go to this part of the website. As of June thirty, twenty twenty-three, I highlighted application waiting list alphabetical A through K. Next slide. And this is what it looks like for us. This is the top of the list of A through K. This is what it looks like. All of us are on this. We all came to this department, and we submitted an application. Maybe one can give you an application to show you what it looks like when we apply for a homestead lease. We didn't apply for a rental in Kauai, for a condo. We applied for a land, for a ninety-nine-year lease. And that is what we get to stand on. You cannot change the program and now tell us that, oh, you got rental. That's what you're waitlisting for. We're not waiting for a waitlist for a rental. We're waiting for land. And you know what? It bothers me so much is that our government lands were put into for Hawaiian homelands, but our government lands have also been used for military. And I went to the state website that tells us how much military houses that they created, military families. And there is actually from twenty twenty-two, forty-one individual registered military active duty in the state of Hawaii. Forty-one thousand, forty-one thousand individuals that we put into a housing, whether it's a barracks, whether it's on. Can you, have any of you ever been on military housing? They have no problem, they get water, they get electricity, they get schools, they get roads, all nice, on all of our lands. Pearl Harbor, Hickam, Kanioli Marine Base, Lululele Naval Valley, my cousin was there, Barking Sands in Kauai, on and on. Pohakulu'a, they can go anywhere in our state, and we have no problem. We made land, we made wastewater treatment, we made water for them. Why can't we make it for us natives? Why do we always have struggles? Like, we gotta beg, beg, beg for land, for money, for our land, but yet we have the military living on them. And I understand why the military is in our state. But if the state and the federal government can find the land in the state of Hawaii for one forty-one thousand active military people, individuals, and also, in addition to that, in twenty twenty-two, they had forty-five thousand dependents to those forty-one thousand active military that we provided. So not only do we provide housing, but if they don't want to stay on base and not enough housing on military bases, those families get to have an allotment of money to come out and buy or rent from our inventory in our state. So we say we're short. We're short because we have people beefing for that same land, for those same inventory. Why blaming us native Hawaiians that we're the one that's causing the stress for the department, the stress for the state, the stress for the federal government? We're just natives. Since nineteen twenty, we got this app. My grandma moved into Nanakuli in nineteen thirty-three. My tutu on Fourth Road for my Meyer side in nineteen thirty-three as well. My mother and my father met, and they had children, myself included. I just wonder, why are we trying to be innovative? When we went on that list, the only thing we applied for is a lot, a homestead lot. And now we're questioning if the lot is too big, that's too much land, are you using it wisely? Why do you need that much land? You don't ask the military that. You don't ask them, why you need that much house? Why you need three bedrooms? Why you need five bedrooms? Why you need two-story? Why you need midway, all those things? We just give them. Why can't we value our native Hawaiians the same way we value military? Why can't we do that? Keo Ko'apu, God bless all of you.
Okay, thank you. Next. Timon?
Aloha, Ma'akako. My name is Timon Kalay Manole, Head Manager of Ho'oumanapono LLC. And we operate out on One Night Coast, we're Native Hawaiian ABC Corporation. Gee, today I feel like I'm schoolboy that actually did my homework, and I come into the class and showing you that, teacher, I did my homework. Okay, so what you guys have been giving right now is a handout of my own report. And this is my own report that I will make, and this is regarding the waitlist. And I'm glad that Altita Jermaine Myers came up here and educate everybody about the waitlist, because that's the topic of this, of this presentation that I have today. So first of all, I would like to like this. I'd like you guys to just reflect, yeah? That of a hundred and three years since the Act been in existence, what we have to show for that today is about ten thousand homesteaders and nearly thirty thousand on the waitlist, countless more who was on the list who passed. And as I sit here today, I sit here to honor my mother, Catherine Emalika Manole Connor. She married Connor. Everybody knew my mom is Jorano, born and raised in Ka'aka'aco, one of seven children. Only one of my mom's siblings got homestead, my auntie Helen, Iwamanalo. None of them got homestead. Of all my cousins, they're all pure Hawaiians. Of our generation, all fifty percent Hawaiians, none of us got homestead. So for my family, the Manole Kahiona bloodline has never been favorable with DHHL. But we're gonna fix that. So I'm here because I want to help you. I want to help you, and I want to help the department. I'm not here to grumble, I'm not here to cast aspersions. I want to support the commission, and I want to support the department, especially, especially the workers in the department. Those faceless people that is in that building over there, who do the work every day, come to work every day, do their work every day, and a lot of times with subpar equipment. One of the things I'd like to highlight before I go into this is amazing that Paula Illo, I'm glad that she's in charge of updating you guys' system with, what did you guys call it yesterday? I heard them, I wasn't here, by the way. I digress from first one. Zach, awesome, bro. We really appreciate you and your ohana. You're a very humble man, and we love you. Thank you for your service. I couldn't be here yesterday because I had to deal with homeless people trashing our land in Lululele. I got them out. Gotta get out the trash now. Anyway. So the topics I got over here, the first one is the quest to diversify housing options. I think it's time that we change our mindset and the way we look at the waitlist. I think it's time we change the way we do things. We gotta update our system. You know, I mean, in today's technology, in the palm of my hand, right here, this is the greatest device in the twenty-first century. You know, right here, I can connect to anybody all around the world. And I don't know if you guys noticed, but I got a business called Premier Paralegal Services, and I do paralegal work for people. I write legal documents so people can afford an attorney. Of course, our deputy attorney general probably even sigh about that, he's like, yeah, bro, we know you. I see you, girl. But one of the tools that I have is I do investigations, right? I have to do investigation on both of my clients and the people that we writing against. And because of those tools that I have, I can research anybody all around the world. So recently, I was going over the Kauai waitlist, and I saw there was seventeen hundred and twenty-seven waitlisters. Two hundred and thirty-eight of them is registered outside of the state of Hawaii. We're gonna go through that. So let's, let me, let me continue to go down the line. So the quest to diversify housing options. I find it, I find it interesting that even though the department has its rules, like Jermaine pointed out to you, right? She was correct. Those rules is in your website. But here's what happened in twenty twenty. Well, it was reported in your annual report of twenty twenty. The rental option, a major milestone, this is on you guys' own website, by the way, in the annual report. A major milestone in creating additional housing for beneficiaries of the Hawaiian Homelands Trust was reached in September twenty nineteen when Governor David Iglesia signed new administrative rules for planned communities, multifamily complexes, and rental housing. So the rules that our system will show you is in existence. But also in twenty nineteen, Governor Iglesia opened the door for that to happen. And that could not have happened if this commission did not approve that. So it had to have gone through commission approval. So as you sit here today, this commission, not this particular commission, but, you know, you guys represent the commission, did approve for planned communities, multifamily complexes, and rental housing. Now we go to the next page, right? The rental option continued. The new administrative rules provide the department with the flexibility. Awful word that, flexibility. I'd like you to remember that. I'd like you remember that. To add to its diverse portfolio, both multifamily and rental housing opportunities for beneficiaries. This is where I like make on valid point right here. I understand there was, you know, some, you know, animosity towards Kali trying to push the white poly issue. But you know diversity of your portfolio? You can have a portfolio of rocks, useless rocks. You can have a portfolio of some rocks and some precious gems. And you can also have a portfolio of gold, platinum, right? All that, right? So far, in 103 years, most of our lands is rubbish lands. They never give us the prime lands. They did to us what they did to the Native Americans, talking about America. They gave them rubbish lands. What did they give us? They pushed us out of the urban core too well. Why Manalo? Why? It's all basalt rock over there. They pushed us out to the Wa'ana'akola, why? Because it's all coral over there. And they're like, nah, it's all rubbish lands, let them go over there. But I gotta tell you something. I'm really proud of our people. Because no matter where you put on Hawaiian, whether it's in basalt rock or coral or one prison cell in Tennessee, because I was there, in Tennessee, Minnesota, Arizona, Florence, Arizona, Sagora, Arizona, Tehachapi, Mississippi, no matter where you put the Hawaiians, we're gonna make that place bigger, better. Texas, you either love us or you hate us. If you love us, we're gonna build you facility. If you show us hate, we're gonna burn them down. And that's what we did in Tennessee, I mean Texas. But every other place, the staff members amazed. How come you guys always take all your stuff out of your guys' room every day and clean them? I say because we Hawaiians, bro. This is how we live. And you look at the other populations from the mainland. Oh, you open a corridor, oh, you can smell all kinds, stench. You don't smell that with Hawaiians. So my point is, is that even though we get rubbish lands, we make them into a gem today. Now look, all of a sudden, Wa'ana'akola is a prize. All these rich people that come move down our side and they like build their gated communities. Why? Because we didn't turn them into a breadbasket. But let me get back on topic. White poly is a prime real estate. Something we don't have in our inventory. We don't have something of value like that. And when you can get $25 billion for something that's worth $42 million, I don't know about you guys, I don't want to invest, but if I was an investor and I could get something for $25 million that cost $42 million, I count that as on score, right? So let's not go back into the past and I know Kali even catch gas for that. But I bring this up because your own rules, your own annual report that was approved by the commission made this possible for Kali to make the move today. Kali wasn't even here in 2019. Next page. The rental option, the point of it all. An affordable rental gives a waiting list applicant a chance to save money on monthly housing costs while preparing financially for homeownership, ultimately offering readiness for when their homestead lot is ready. Imagine that. Your commission had the vision back then to understand that you can prepare us for homeownership because, to be honest, most of us is broke, bro. Me, I'm broke ass, I don't want 510, what is that, 401K plan and, you know, social security or whatever. I don't want $250,000 in the bank and I don't have a 720 credit score. In fact, my credit score is like 400 something. I'm really down in the dirt. But for people like us, 30% or below am I? For us to be able to participate in something like this, who will bring us up, you giving us a hand up so that we can be prepared to take our lot? How many people will get their lot and the thing sit there like trash and fall on the house already? That's not their fault. A lot of our people wasn't prepared for what they was getting. That's not their fault. That's not our fault, right? But this kind of program like this, it allows us to earn that, to work towards that. And coming from the housing, I grew up in Kalii Valley Housing, right? Right down the road, KPT, high-rise. When I was growing up, people suicide off the 17th floor. People throw diapers, TVs, toasters. They piss and shit in the stairwells. But guess what would happen to KPT? Somebody in their brilliant mind decided, hey, you know what? Why don't we turn this housing complex into ownership for the people that live there? Now all of a sudden, the people who now looking at, hey, wait a minute, I'm gonna be an owner over here. I'm gonna be part owner of all these complexes over here. They went and decided they wanted one new management company to run their place and a new security company. I know because that's the Falea Fini family, right? They ran them, Robert Dym, they ran the security over there. And now all of a sudden, nobody pissing in the stairwells. Nobody shitting in the stairwells, nobody breaking the elevators and nobody throwing nothing off of the 17th floor. Because they have ownership now. You see what I'm saying? So this kind of programs, this is what it does for us. For those of us who don't have nothing. Now granted, a lot of the opposition, I see them, they get their homestead. They get their houses. A lot of our people, they renting outside of homestead. $1,700, $1,800 for one bedroom. White poly would have offered them $300 a month for one bedroom. You cannot get that kind of deal anywhere in Hawaii. Show me where. Maybe the cardboard box across the street might be at the bus stop, but not here. Next one. The Department of Hawaiian Homeland is preparing to begin the vertical construction of 16 homes within the villages of La'opua by the end of 2020. Marking the department's second rent with options to purchase project. Financing for the project will use in part federal and state low-income housing tax credits equity secured by Hunk Capital Partners in collaboration with Ikaike Ohana and Urban Housing Communities. Oh my God, we said the bad words. We just said light tech in one annual report that was approved by the commission. Light tech. Approved by the commission. So light tech is not a bad word. It was approved. And it's been working. Last one. The department successfully launched its pilot rent with options to purchase projects in Kapule Oahu in 2001. By 2017, the Ho'oulima Lima Rent With Option to Purchase Initiative had successfully provided 70 beneficiaries with homestead lease conversion. Again, see the DHHL 2020 annual report. Is this a lie? Is this a lie on your own website? Are you lying to the world? Or are you encouraging us? Now, next one. The truth about the failures of Ho'oulima Lima and La'opua. Now I never get a chance here to talk to the developers of La'opua, but I know Uncle Bo and I know if I give him a call, he will give me the inside scoop. But I was able to talk to Craig Watase of Mark Development. This is some things that I went learn just recently. Part of the problems that you're not hearing, you're hearing that, oh, Ho'oulima Lima was bad and everything is worse and light tech will destroy everything. What you wasn't told, falsification or hiding homestead composition relative to income certification to qualify for home. People was falsifying the information or hiding household, the household composition that is relative to the income certification to qualify for home. So in order to qualify, they didn't make themselves be able to qualify. But that wasn't totally true. Now you have to believe me, there was an investigation done. So I'm not disparaging anybody. You guys gonna end up researching this and finding out the truth to that. Next one. One recent testifier spoke of his problems with light tech nightmare. However, his real problem stemmed from his creation of a commercial kitchen in his home in violation of the house rules. Now on homestead lot, I think that the rule, the Homestead Act gave me the right to do robbing down a tommy, what do you call it, mercantile on homestead land. But when you're doing rental, you don't really own that. You gotta follow by rules. And you cannot just set up your own commercial kitchen. But the guy was here telling you how bad light tech was in Ho'oulima Lima. But what he never tell you was the reason why he ran into problems was because he didn't set up on commercial kitchen. Again, you guys gonna investigate this and you gonna find this to be true. Next, the addition of children or familial status. Now I got a note over here, must add to legislative package to amend Hawaii's soft approach to familial status law. You know, coming from the prison system and me, I'm a convicted felon, I mean convicted felon and I'm a sex offender. My victim was an adult. But I was there with a lot of child molesters. I tell you, familial status is just a child predator's best dream in Hawaii. You wonder why we get so much predation on children? Because Hawaii's law like familial status allows people to just accumulate kids into their home. But when regards to this kind of project, they're using the kids to be able to qualify. They're using children to be able to qualify or familial status because the law protects them. And when you guys investigate, you guys gonna find this to be a problem. We may have to ask for legislative amendments to that law. By the way, here I have familial status report of the federal housing laws of all 50 states. I also have the Title 42, Chapter 45, Subchapter I, Section 3607, Religious Organizations or Private Club Exemption. This is the reason why you guys run into problems. We're trying to deal with familial status. But there is exemptions and one of them is kupuna housing. That's your strength right there. That's you guys' strength right there, dealing with kupuna housing with light tech. Then the last one is living conditions in violation of house rules on sanitary or safe hazardous conditions. These four things that I just highlighted to you is not shibai. It's real. It exists. There was investigations done on it. And if you guys contact Craig Watase, I think he was supposed to have a rep over here today. I don't know if he's here or online, but he'll be able to make that to you. So what is the solution? Am I gonna come over here and grumble? Nah, I don't like grumble, I like solutions. So I think a PIG is warranted in this situation to address the problematic issues head on. Bring in past light tech development experts and community advocates to address rights, responsibilities of both the developers, the landlord, and the beneficiaries. You know Hawaii get one landlord tenant code book that outlines, clearly outlines, the rights and responsibilities of both parties. How come we don't know that? You know, if we like, if we saying, I saying I like light tech, then I should be also willing to accept that I gotta have responsibilities for my condo when I live in the housing unit. You know what I mean, in that rentals, right? So we need that. And then another one is strong unambiguous administrative rules of the department relating to light tech project. Create, you need to, I think you should create your own, its own subsection under Title 10. You guys should have one section that deals specifically with light tech and what rules the commission is willing to approve for that. Now let's get to this one. This one is a big one for me. The SMS Application Survey, DHHL Applicant Survey 2014, published 2015. This got me to, when I was going through the list, what came to my mind, I believe Ho'oukupuna is guiding to launch this project, Ho'aimai O'kapoe alohaaina. It's the return of the patriots. You know, a lot of our people was pushed out of the state went to the mainland because they cannot survive over here. When I started talking to people on the waitlist, on the mainland, every single one of them wants to come home. Most of them were all kupuna status. They're in the later years of their life. When they holler, they like holler on the soil. I get one brother who was online over there earlier. His name is Dane. He wanted to talk to you folks. And I get one auntie online, Napua. When I first told her about white poly, she said, brother, if the thing was available today, I would fly home today. Today I would fly home to be there. Unfortunately, her brother just passed away, so she is home. What brought her home was the passing of her brother. She's here on Kauai. Okay, so-called 1.8% or so and the Kauai reality. From the 2015 SMS Applicant Report. Now I got the reports. I got the Lisi Survey from SMS 2015 and I got the applicant report over here. This one, I gotta take off my glasses because I gotta read them good. The first survey was self-administered, male survey designed to provide very broad coverage of the applicant group. You see that right there? This is their own report saying that. That they were self-administered, they sent out a self-administered male survey, right? The survey instrument was relatively brief to maximize response rates and designed to include items that were directly comparable to the 1995, 2003, and 2008 surveys. The survey instrument was mailed to all DHHL applicants with valid current addresses. Now let me skip down to the red part. Those households that are both lessees and applicants for an additional award are included in the results report here. A total of 26,416 surveys were mailed to current applicants. You don't see the problem in that one. If you get already, but you waiting for something else, your likes and dislikes gonna be different from mine. I'm a true applicant. I have nothing. But if you combine your survey with people who already get, already living on homestead, waiting for their lot, then maybe they're living with their auntie, their mother, their cousin or whatever, and they're waiting. Your wants and desires is different from mine. Mine, I'm gonna tell you, you know kupuna that is highly recognized on Kauai. His name is Avery Yun. His brother is Gilmore, just retired as principal of Kapua High School. You know what a sad thing that they said? All seven of his siblings. We might as well take something because we probably not gonna get anything. How sad is that? That you gotta be at that mindset right now? That you rather take something because you know you probably gonna get nothing while you wait for your land. So here's the reality of relative to Kauai versus 2014. As of May 2023, there was 1,725 applicants. When they did the study, there was only 887. That's from their own book, that's from their own study. So the list has grown twice as large. The waitlist age is 10 years older now. Virtually all waitlisters whom we contacted on the continent wants to come home. Most of the elder waitlisters just want something before they holler. Now let's go to the history of white poly. This is nothing new. What we heard from the opposition was, bro, this is the first time we heard of this and we're now getting evicted and how unfair it is for us to get evicted, occurring in bro, this is the first time we heard of this and we're now getting evicted and how unfair it is for us to get evicted, the current residents. I talk about the current residents. I was there at the HHFTC meeting last week and I mentioned that. And there was grumbling in the back that I was lying. Was I lying? Did I lie? No. Twenty nineteen. Kipukai Kualii, who's the head of Shah right now. A full seven-member county council went through a packet, a then package, uh, pack, uh, agenda Wednesday morning in Lehi. The council heard emotional public testimony from two residents of the Cordial Zai Waipoli Apartments about a resolution by the council supporting efforts towards preserving the affordability restrictions and the potential acquisition of the eighty-two unit property before August nineteenth, when a ten-year affordability contract with the county expires. So as far back as twenty nineteen, the people who lived there knew that their days was numbered. This was far, five years before DHHL got involved. So why are we the bad guys? We not the bad guys. Now, I gotta give credit. There's a contractor who was dealing with Waipoli right now. And what he told me was, we cannot just kick people out because federal law requires that we assist these families to move out. Guess how they gonna see them? Depending on the AMI, depending on the income, they gonna get checks of thirty to forty thousand dollars to find another place to live. And they helping to find rentals on the island. But I thought that they was just getting kicked to the streets because from what I know, when it comes to Hawaiians, nobody cares. When they kick us out, they put us on the beach. Nobody gave us a check of thirty to forty thousand dollars to move. But these guys are being taken care of. So why are we villainizing Hawaiian homestead lands, DHHL? We are actually helping these people. If they take their thirty thousand and decide they like to roll them in Vegas, it's up to them, but that's their money. Again, in twenty, in twenty twenty-four, God in our, they talk about affordable housing at, 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 um, Waipoli. So almost every year they get them. So here's the cold, hard and sobering facts. Me, I like deal with facts. I deal with law. I deal with facts. Your deputy attorney general should know that. They deal with facts. Of everything that was shared thus far, this section is the most painful to share. For me, it's the most painful. Please let's all take a moment of silence to reflect on those who have lost their lives while waiting on the waitlist, including my own mother. Okay, I already told you her name, who died just three months shy of her sixtieth birthday of lung cancer. I was in Halaava, um, security facility, um, Halaava medium security facility when she passed. That's our kupuna we just went, we just went honor just now. That's our kupuna that we in honor, those that went past on the waitlist. Having honored our beloved Nakupuna, let's get down to it. This Kauai waitlist, according to the department's own posted information on its website, was last updated five thirty-one twenty twenty-three. Five thirty-one twenty twenty-three. This is your guys' own website. It was updated. It says updated. On the list itself, you will find a handful of those who are listed as deceased. There's six of them. Six of them that on the list, if you look at them, you gonna find six that was deceased. However, just the first thirteen names on the Kauai waitlist has passed long before the waitlist was updated. I know, cause I did the research. I went go look for these people, see where they at. They, they were, um, signed up in nineteen sixty-one. In nineteen sixty-one, you had to be eighteen years older. So think about that. What age would they be today if they was just eighteen years old? You can see why they went past. This hurt and the pain of discovery got worse by the end of the eighteen pages. The, the list is eighteen pages long for Kauai. And that's what I love about Jermaine. She even pushed that up on top there, that waitlist. I talking about the Kauai waitlist. The total of deceased we found is forty-three. You guys don't even know that. Your department don't know that. I know that, cause I did the research. And I will turn over all my, all my evidence to you folks, to the pig, whoever you guys make the pig. If you guys decide to do that, I will turn that over to you. And then six, um, that's out of status, those who are out of state passed. Six of them are in state for a total of forty-nine beneficiaries, not counting the six that was already there on the list. There are two hundred and thirty-eight beneficiary applicants who are listed as out of state. Not counting the one in Germany and not counting the one in Guam. Of the two hundred and thirty-eight beneficiaries out of state, minus the forty-three, twenty-eight were interested in Lytec or rental owner, some kind of condo kind of living arrangement. Twenty-eight of them, that I personally talked to them. I personally talked to them. In fact, I got an auntie can call on the line right now. She waited. The remaining hundred sixty-seven want, either wanted to continue to wait for their lot or information on them couldn't be found or not available for contact. So there were some that I just couldn't make contact, no matter what tool I was in use, you just cannot find them. Our analysis, our end analysis is fourteen percent of those listed as out of state want Lytec or some form of box living. Yes. Derogatory terms that was used for this. Every one of them is kupuna status. Seven out of the state listed are back home in Hawaii and build a highly successful careers. They are the Yun Ohana. If you're from Kauai, you would know these people. Avery Yun is very well known. In fact, Avery Yun was the, was the architect on Waipoli. When I contacted him and I talked to him, I never know who he was. I just was contacting some name on the list. And then he said, bro, I was the architect on that project. I don't know if he's still online, but he wanted to talk to you guys too. And he supports this project and projects like this. Just so you know, the Yun Ohana has a vast network of Ohana on Kauai and are highly respected on the island. And is also, as is also evidenced by my own connections on Kauai, cause I get my own people on Kauai. Fourteen percent today is a far cry from the one point eight percent. That's why if you notice, I put one point eight percent. I kinda being wise about that, cause that's what was keep quoting, yeah? Somebody keep putting, oh, only one percent, one point eight percent want this. Well, I just proved that fourteen percent want it. In conclusion, the concept of the waitlist, as has been used and operated for the last hundred and three years, is outmoded, outdated and outlived its purpose. This is the twenty-first century and we need twenty-first century solutions for better waitlist. Walter, I heard you yesterday referring to them trying to update stuff and you said twenty-first century. What century are we? We in the eighteenth century or the twenty-first century? You said that. That's why I put that over here, cause we in the twenty-first century, right? Okay, so what we need is a real-time and fluid waitlist that flows with beneficiaries. Like in the healthcare arena, why won't we, why don't we include an emergency contact? They do that in healthcare, right? Some way, you get one medical thing, right? You get your husband as your emergency contact, right? In case something happened to you, they can contact your husband. How come we no more that? We should have that. Upgrade research capabilities. Going off a last known address will only continue to net bad information. I heard yesterday, oh, we're going off of the last known address. Yeah, this is the twenty-first century, bro. Telephone numbers change. You can get that anytime on the internet. And, and, and addresses change all the time. So just going off of address is not a good idea. Creating a global network that values those who, for whatever reason, moved away from Hawaii will end the pain and sorrow of disenfranchisement. This is the main thing that I found and that hurt me the most, which is why I wanted to return the patriots to Hawaii. That's the program that I, I dubbing this as, that we turn on the patriots. It's because almost every one of them said, once we got up here, we forgot and nobody contacted us, nobody talked to us. I think you guys, we need to do a, we, we all need to do a better job. So in conclusion, you guys can read them. I give credit to everybody over here. Paula Kalani, Gigi Kahana, Juan, Nicole, cause I heard them all yesterday. You're making great strides. We're on a new, we're on a new course now. We're on a new course. We're setting one new course today. And at the head of the course is the captain of our ship or the quarterback of our team. And that is Kali Watson. I'm gonna tell you guys right now, I've never sat down with this man and ate a meal with him. So I don't know what he personally thinks of me. But I can tell you this much, I would support this guy from twenty seventeen, when he came to the Nanakuli Neighborhood Board meeting. And the reason why I'm supporting him, because this is one Kanaka putting Hawaiians in homes. However, you gotta do him, bro. To do that. And I ask you, all of you, how many Hawaiians have you put in one house, in one house? How many you personally have put in one house? I can tell you this much, on this commission, you guys did that job. Zach, you did it. Cause you approved it. Dennis, you did it, cause you approved those projects that put Hawaiians in homes. I saw you, Dennis, with your o-o laris. In the field. Proud Kanaka, came back from San Francisco, took over the airport in Kauai, and now you working for our people. You did it. Mike, you're here, you did it. You now, both of you now doing it. So you guys on the same team. You might have some different ideas or whatever, but for the most part, we on the same, on the same page. So lastly, I'd like to just credit my beautiful wife over there, Aiko.
Yeah, ma.
You know, um, without her, I wouldn't be able to put all this stuff together. Cause it's driving me nuts to do all the intricate details. Gee, Zach know. He get a wife that do that too. And I'd like to credit Craig Watase, who opened his heart and mind to me to be able to provide me with facts that I was able to put in a report. You guys should talk to him. He can give you guys the information. He can give you the evidence about what happened at Ho'ole Malima, what really happened. And then also I'd like to credit Christian Okano. I don't know if you guys know this guy's name yet, but you will. This guy is an amazing guy. This guy is Irish. He married Hawaiian. His kids go to school over here. And he love Hawaiians and he wanna help us to get homes. Then at the end, I let you, I'm gonna leave that for you guys to read. Because in this, unlike everybody else that come before you, I bear to you who I am and where I come from. You will know in here, in writing, that I'm a convicted felon and the crimes that I committed to get there. And to be here tells you that I have an attitude of gratitude. I don't take nothing for granted today. My life is, is free today. My wife will tell you, I will drive my truck on the freeway. I will stop, I'll get out, I'll touch the road and I'll get back in my truck. Because I couldn't do that when I was in shackles and barely changed. Looking out of the transport vehicle at the road and realizing I don't have control over my life. My life is controlled by somebody else. Telling me stand by and wait for me get taller people in a prison cell. I take this serious. Nothing I said today is, is meant to hurt anybody's feelings or to go against anybody. I bringing you facts to tell you, we need to do something else with this waitlist. We gotta blow up this waitlist and we gotta create something better for our people. Because the waitlist does not offer, like Jermaine clearly pointed out, it does not offer con, um, condo, rental own. She clearly pointed out only homestead lot, agriculture lot, pastoral. We need to update it. And that's what I'm here to ask you to do. Start a pig if you can, and that's it. That's my presentation. Mahalo.
Thank you, Demont. Any questions or comments? Thank, thank you.
Mahalo for standing up. You know, we, we don't get to see another side of our community that you bring in experience and knowledge. It's important for us to hear the voices of those, as you say, who cannot. Because we have to serve that community. And if we don't, we shouldn't be here. So mahalo Nui, you did good homework. Your teachers are proud of you. And mahalo Aiko for the organization. But thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Demont.
We're good?
We're good. All right. Max, Lindsay, you wanna say something?
Aloha Commissioners, Chair. My name is Kone Kauai Ola, Max Lindsay. I'm a project manager with Mark Development. Our company president is Craig Watase. As Demont just so passionately, passionately shared, you know, the rent with option to purchase program is not without its challenges, but we believe in it and, um, myself personally, as a descendant of waitlisters, as the, as the child of a waitlister who has since passed, you know, this is, uh, one kind of opportunity for Kanaka. This is one kind of opportunity to allow people the chance at, uh, quality, safe, affordable housing while, um, preparing to, you know, purchase a home. Briefly, there were cases within, uh, the time of Kapole Ho'ole Malima where, some households who came in as renters actually left the program to accept, uh, a homestead lot outside of Ho'ole Malima. So we just, we are, you know, at, uh, available for, for any further questions. Thank you for hearing us.
Max, you might wanna mention about the Hana Pepe project?
Yes, thank you, Chair. So, um, Mark Development, uh, is the developer selected and we are, um, working on the next phase of, uh, the homes in Hana Pepe. We have been awarded, or yeah, we have been awarded, uh, uh, Lytec rate, the low-income housing tax credits. Uh, our project was on the HHFTC agenda for approval last week. So we are excited to, uh, continue that opportunity to, you know, build homes for the beneficiaries of this department and, um, again, to, uh, have another opportunity to utilize the, uh, low-income housing tax credits and rent with option to purchase program to provide these, uh, housing opportunities for Hawaiians.
And what was the breakdown? Of the units, what, thirty?
I would need to look that up, Chair. I'm sorry. I don't have that.
I think it was eighty-two or you got thirty at a Lytec.
Yes, we were, I think it was eighty-two units.
Right.
Eighty-two homes in Hana Pepe, which, uh, I believe the, the construction, um, the earthwork is about to begin. So we're very excited to continue working with you all.
Yeah, and let me also note that, and I congratulate you guys for, uh, getting the highest scoring in winning the nine percent tax credits award from HHFTC, which is reflective of your guys', uh, I guess, talents as well as expertise in the area. Uh, let me also add that, uh, you guys are helping. Let me also add that you guys are helping some of the other developers, not only in their efforts to increase the type of categories that are available to our home settlers, especially those on the lower income, which would otherwise be bypassed. And you're, you guys are also active in our Kopea development here in Kapole. So I congratulate you guys. You guys go way back, even when I was a director, first time around, I remember you guys stepped up. The whole Le Ma Lima, that was a new initiative. Your dad was very instrumental in getting hugged to certify and approve the, and overcome the discrimination argument that some people were putting out. So I thank your dad and I, as a fellow, a classmate from law school, he was a very special person.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Max. Okay, J five, Keiko Inamoto, Act two thirty-seven, two thirty-six, lease renewals. I guess is the topic.
Aloha, Commissioners.
Aloha.
Yes, I am Keiko Inamoto from the island of Maui, Wa'ouli Homestead. And I'd like to speak on Act two thirty-six, also on the Pulehunui one hundred eighty-four acre tract in central Maui. And thirdly, on the water meter for the one hundred twenty-seven acre up-country tract that is licensed to Pa'upana Community Development, Inc. First of all, regarding Act two thirty-six, which was enacted in twenty twenty-one, concerning forty-year lease renewals of Hawaiian homelands. These leases would be to non-Hawaiian, non-beneficiary entities. One, while homelands still are needed for homesteading. And two, without congressional approval mandated for state legislation that diminishes beneficiary rights. Further, furthermore, why protect non-beneficiary rights to our trust lands while declining to protect the rights and entitlements via universal undivided, which is let's see, status for twenty-eight thousand beneficiaries waiting for homestead awards? Act two thirty-six appears to be a breach of trust. Since native Hawaiians of fifty percent blood quantum are the intended assignees of the nineteen twenty-one Hawaiian Homes Commission Act, federal trust. Secondly, with regard to Pulehunui, I want to advise the commission that Pa'upana Community Development, Inc., is partnering with Hawaii Hawaii Taro Farm LLC and with Hui Ulu Olo O Maui, a nonprofit, on this one hundred eighty-four acre tract at Puunene. And furthermore, we, this month, we started collaborating with G seventy planners and architects. We're collaborating with G seventy planner Kavika Maken and with G seventy architect Rin Matsumura. And our intention is to move forward on planning, design, and conceptual drawings on our agro-tourism proposal for this one hundred eighty-four acre Pulehunui tract at Puunene, central Maui. That has been proposed for a shopping center. And I'd like to advise the commission also that many of our shopping centers have a lot of empty space that's available and that is going without less ease. And so I think that an agro-tourism complex on this one, this beautiful one hundred eighty-four acre tract would be more beneficial use of this, of this land. And thirdly, with regard to the water meter at the one hundred twenty-seven acre tract that Pa'upana Community Development, Inc. has a long-term permit to. I want to update the commission that following Chairman Kali Watson's January twenty twenty-four request letter for a water meter, I talked with the County Department of Water Supply, Water Engineer Ashley LaRoya last week. And she said she will follow up on the letter, on a letter that she drafted that is awaiting the Director John Stufelbin's signature requesting. So that letter is requesting clarification on the subject acreage and on the Hawaiian Homes Water Credits Policy. I went ahead and forwarded to, to her, the DHHL Water Program Specialist Shari Noel Ka'ana's April twelve email explaining the department's water credits policy. And the DHHL Planning Office or myself can forward information clarifying the subject one hundred twenty-seven acre homelands parcel. In conclusion, I do not support forty-year lease extensions under Act two thirty-six in view of proprietary use of all homelands for homesteading and/or beneficiary mercantile use. Secondly, I advise that we are collaborating with G seventy planners and architects on the Pulehunui one hundred eighty-four acre homelands tract. And lastly, I hope the County of Maui and the department will expedite water meters application for our up-country one hundred twenty-seven acre parcel. Thank you so much. Aloha. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. J eight, I guess it would be the last person to testify, Princess Lehu Anani.
She's in the bathroom, she's coming out. Did she go to the restroom? She's in there going to the restroom.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Aloha.
Aloha.
Thank you so much. Aloha, mahalo. First of all, I had to give Anko aloha, yeah. Thank you so much. I remember you from Maui. You saved us from bullets, from bullets. My mother, aloha, thank you. You had a lot to do with us on the island of Maui. He saved a lot of our bullets from your bullets. Sorry. Even though my, my mother, please make that.
That's fine.
Mahalo. Aloha to you.
Aloha.
And if you have a heart, he passed on, sorry. Especially everybody that's here, everybody in the audience. Mahalo. I still recovered. I kept recovering from Festback. And if you picked up Festback, you would talk, ten days was a long day to host and honor our fellow brothers and sisters from Tonga, Samoa. I got to meet the kings and the queens. What an honor. What an honor. To go represent the royal family. I move on King when he said, Princess, where you King? Where you Queen? I said, I am here. Oh, sorry, sorry. I was gonna ask you, but listen. Mahalo, aloha. Princess Lehu Anani, kumaeva ka'ina ka'aleo momona from the island and the village of Hawaii Ne'e of Maui, Westai Lahaina, Mala Village, from Wa'oukama to Wa'ine'e, Ahupua'a, Ah, to the valley of Kauula. Only a Mo'i Alii would know where they're from. So I had to go and teach them Mo'i Alii. But they thought Josh Green was a Mo'i Alii. And I said, that wasn't in the south. To our says Hawaiians, Ku'akanaka Mo'ole, for the Ho'opuku to be given to Captain Cook. Straight up. Because he not Hawaiian, he not Ku'akanaka. And if you guys from Cook Island and from Tonga and Samoa, no, you no go give, you'll give to a foreigner, but to an Alii. So I told them, Hawaiians, Oha, DHHL, VLN R, CHNA, why you guys never at least have one picture of our Queen Lili Okalani Ah? Because Ah was there. I was a participant. And if you guys came, I was in the Hawaii village pounding tapa. It's the only tradition that we could offer in this whole entire, besides entertainment, that came out of Polynesian Culture Center. So I'm here to let you know that we are the Ku'akanaka Mo'oles. We all have Aliis. They brought their flags from their country. The flag we have to represent us is not our country flag. That is a British and American flag. That's what that understood. The only thing we have as Ku'akanaka Mo'ole was our world symbol. The Kahili. So I took it with me. I was the only one in Rizum unless you had on table for sale. I was there to meet all the kings and the queens from all these different nations that came to our kingdom of Hawaii, nay, not state of Hawaii. I went there and I represent our Hawaii Ne'e. I represent Queen Lili Okalani, not King Kameha Meha, he gone back home to Kohala. So we needed to let them know. I also represent Queen Ke'opu'alani. This is her Kahili, colors. You're not gonna find the red. You're specially made. The blue for the blue blood. Queen Ke'opu'alani is King Kameha Meha third royal mama. I brought him. One, two, three. I know Ron with King Kameha Meha the first. I had to make them understand that. I not related to him. Do you know that King Kameha Meha the first, the king that you guys, Anna, is part Samoan, Osamoan? He married into our bloodline to get that bloodline. Only one Mo'i Alii, King Kameha Meha third, was born from all the wives that he had, forty-seven. Because to my great-grandmama, Queen Ke'opu'alani, who was the most sacred, who is due today. I come from Lahaina, where I come from, everything was burnt. Church, house, school, only one thing never burned. Her role too. That my mama, my grandma, my uncle raised when I was a little girl. You can imagine that feeling of watching your tutu rising a Mo'i Alii on your Ahupua'a and on your kingdom of Maui. I'm here here today because I also want to speak about the pastoral lots. I've been on your DHHL debt list since nineteen ninety-three. So this is, I finally found out, go get your Mo'oku'au'au'au done. I did. Nineteen ninety-three, I'm on your list till today. That's over thirty years. My grand, my, my oldest daughter is forty-two. I've been on the hard housing, which we talked about, how I could have used it, because I've been on the hard housing for forty years. I could have used that for my housing right now for Hawaiian homelands that I've been on for thirty years. We just found it out in nineteen eighty. But because of the lack of education, the lack of having the turnover. Kali Watson, Chairman, you're my fourth. You're my fourth Chairman. You can imagine all the chairmans I went through from Maui to here. I've been here for ten years. You're my fourth Chairman. All of you over here are new. So some of you know me from ten years when I moved here, because Maui said, Princess Lehu Anani, for twenty years, we have nothing to do, we have nothing to say, we cannot do nothing, our hands just like behind the back. Go Oahu and I move Oahu. I was just evicted. I was just illegally removed. And yes, brother, I was thrown in prison. I just came out. Seven days isolation in prison. I just want my case. And I get one more case because they wanted to lock me out for ten more years, less last week. Last week, I was sentenced to ten years in prison to shut me up. And I fought in prison. And when I was in prison for seven days isolation, nobody came to visit me, nobody even had to be in my face. I prayed. I prayed to my ancestors. I prayed to Jehovah God that may I be here. Right? So now going back again on point to pastoral. I've been on pastoral waiting on Kahiki Nui, where my ancestors was born and raised. I even have the graveyard there that they was even married in the church of Kahiki Nui. Kali Watson, Chairman, you came December twentieth, you came December. You awarded fifty-two people. Five was from Namenglen. Four was from Oahu. I was back on the list. Why? See, I told Uncle, if he can put up here, I wanted to see, because yesterday you guys have put up one, one chart. I told Uncle if he could put them up for me when I come up. No more. But yesterday, you looking at chat yesterday, because I paid attention too. Maui, big Kalayalo. Oahu, nothing pastoral. They would never get me on. Because now we gotta go to the list of the Oahu and other islands even before I can get on. So now I get Uncle that come from Oahu, he sitting next to me on Maui, and he telling me, because we all gonna draw, he got on, but he said, I, baby girl, go what? I not even from Maui. I don't know nothing about here. Then Uncle, why you over here? Because you know what? That's the only thing we get. Because Oahu no more. Why? I want to make a solution today. Please open Oahu Pastoral. You guys have no excuse. Oahu get good grounds. You guys get Haleiva. You guys get, why not I take out that military, as they were saying. Take out that military and put us back in there. Put our pastoral in there. So why? So Oahu can have their own pastoral and I can finally go back home on Maui on the pastoral that I, my ancestors died on and was raised on. Ain't it about going back to our Mo'oku'au'au to ancestors, right? Chairman? And that's what I want to do. Bring us back. So one other, so that's the solution for pastoral. Open it up on Oahu. Because then Maui, whoever on Maui right now, they can come back home. Right now, you guys living, dividing these families up. They have no choice. They gotta go Maui, because that's the only pastoral right now. You see how big? They give me no choice if everybody gonna come from these other islands. But if you bring Oahu back here where they belong, where they can have their housing, their kuliana, then I can go and finally have where they can put me on before I die. Thank you. That's for the pastoral. That's my solution. Open up Oahu. One other thing is let's do away with blood quantum. It is a general generational curse. If I am the Mo'i Alii since Lili Okalani now. She Lili Okalani, and I put makeup. See how sad I look when I look at Lili Okalani purple? Because she was not even risen. She was not even honored at this Festback. Not even her picture was up. Please, you should even have her picture next to his on this wall. She is the queen of Oahu. Please honor her. I had to go and teach them who really was our Mo'i Alii. So I went around asking everybody, who you Mo'i Alii? I don't know. Who you Mo'i, Chair? Who you Mo'i Alii? Chair, Kali Watson, who you Mo'i Alii?
Well, I have some relation to the Kahiki Nui as well as Commander the Third.
Thank you so much.
It's not about me.
No, it is important. We have to know our Alii. If not, we never need to our Mo'oku'au'au, right? It's because our Mo'oku'au'au gonna take us to Alii, gonna take us to our land. See, I brought my Aliis. King Kameha Meha third. His mother from Maui, Lahaina, Queen Ke'opu'alani. You know this, the name of Kameha Meha. I'm not Kameha Meha. I'm not from Kohala. This is my Alii. And then my tutu man, High Chief Ala'pa'Inui. So you gotta know your Alii. If not, you an immigrant, one foreigner, and just one person that not belong here. You can imagine how they felt when I had to go to the women's convention at this Festback for two days. That's where I got your lay from. From one of the, the experts there, one of the delegates from Guam, from the Guam tribe. They gave me your lay. Mahalo Ke'akua, that is from Guam. Okay, and when I went there, you can imagine. And when I went there, you can imagine, I had to go and explain to them who our Ali'i was. So mahalo Kea'ua. Maybe also me. I wanna meet with that lawyer because yesterday also I will speak, you guys will speak about the law, how now we can go and make changes in the legislative. Please hook me up with that person, that lady yesterday, you guys, law person. Because I wanna submit a no blood quantum. In our generation, what? What you said? Twentieth? Ten or twentieth century. This here was the seventeen-eighteen of Queen Lili'okalani. Look at her so sad. You never see her smiling. Now, look at me rising as a Mo'i Ali'i in her name from the Kingdom of Maui through King Kameha'meha III. Look at the nineteenth century now. So please, please look what you folks doing. Please continue in bringing us forward. Thank you so much for the wonderful knowledge. Thank you so much, Jermaine, for the message, for teaching folks. Because we already know, like now you guys are new. Yeah, you guys my fourth turnover that now you guys getting to know me too. Princess Lehu'anani kume'eva. And I so proud to be here. Mahalo Kea'ua. May I share a gift before I go? And this is from my tutus. Mahalo. Yeah, share a gift to all of you before I go. There's one thing they never had. They had everything else, founding, whatever. Yeah, they had everything, hula. But this one tradition, they never had. It was no school. Even the no school, you know, not any glow. When you glow from your mouth, you want come out of your mouth? Lies, deception, hate. When you come out of your mouth, it's no how. And if anybody can do this. And usually men do this. Because this is a peacemaking between a husband and a man, where you do this. That's what this is meant for. The no school. Yeah. E'ho'omakou'au'a, ilakalani. E'ho'e'ino'a, ho'e'ino'a. E'ini mai'akau'a'uni. E'wakama'i'ila'au'au. M'ake, m'ake. Ma'apu'nu'ane. E'ini wakalani'au'a. E'yo, e'ya. Omakaka. Mahalo. Malu.
Aloha. Thank you very much. Aloha.
For HRS to consult with its attorneys on questions and issues pertaining to the commission's powers, duties, privileges, immunities and liabilities. Can I have a motion?
Go move. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Okay, we're going to go into executive session so... And the people in the audience please vacate while we in executive session. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for the motion being...
Okay. Okay, the minor. Okay, the commission is reconvening from its executive session. The commission discussed its powers, duties and liabilities related to telecommunications on the homelands and Act 14. Thank you.
Okay. Wait, wait.
The Commission discussed its powers, duties and liabilities related to telecommunication on the homelands and Act 14. Thank you.
Okay. Wait, wait.
This job getting harder, right? The next... We come to the end of our meeting. Mahalo Nui for participating. Mahalo to Commissioner Helm again, where he says.
Yay.
As we bid him a fine aloha and ahuiho. The next regular meeting will be held on July 15th and 16th, 2024, starting at 9:30 a.m. here at Halei Pono'i. We are adjourned.